So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I need a motion for a resolution to memorialize executive session.
So moved.
Okay, number, the resolution for an executive closed session not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12 at sec, whereas the subject matters discussed were excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B and whereas it was necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B and NJSA 10:4-13, that the Board entered into an executive session from which the public was excluded, and be it further resolved that the general nature of the subjects discussed relate to the following items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12B as designated. Number four, matters relating to the collective bargaining agreements, PBA negotiations. Items number seven, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege, legal updates, homestead, and jail. Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners, or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality, and be it further resolved that the Board has completed business for which the Board had entered into the executive session, and be it further resolved that the Board expects to take action later on in the meeting.
So moved.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Cares. Item six, proclamation certificates, presentations, there are none. Number seven is a public hearing. It's a final adoption resolution. At a regular meeting held on February 13, 2025, we introduced the first reading, the following resolution, which was advertised in New Jersey Herald issue of February 23, 2025, together with a notice of public hearing stated it would be held at this meeting at 6:00 PM. This resolution's authorized in cap to limit county budget appropriation increase in 2025 county budget to three and a half percent over the previous year's final appropriation, subject to certain exceptions, and establish an appropriation cap bank. Motion that public hearing be opened.
So moved.
Deputy Director Space, Deputy Commissioner Degru, any discussion? No? All in favor say aye.
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 Abstain. Is there anyone here present to speak on this resolution in the public? I'll just be, Kent Collins, Andover Township, New Jersey. I'll be really quick with this. I've been coming here for many years, asking you guys to do what the public really wants to see you do, and that is lower taxes, because we depend on you to do that. And the problem in New Jersey is that the property taxes aren't too high. So, we're putting a cap on how much you raise it at three and a half percent is nonsense. We need to do the right thing and find ways to reduce your budget and reduce property taxes if you want to do the right thing for our community. Thanks a lot. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, motion that the public hearing be closed. So moved. Mr. Henderson, you got a second?
Second.
Commissioner Degru, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, carries. I get a motion that this resolution be finally adopted.
So moved.
Deputy Director Space, got a second?
Second.
Commissioner Degru, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Abstain.
Aye.
Carries. I need a motion to authorize clerk to advertise this resolution as finally adopted, and also post the same on a bulletin board in the lobby of the County Administrative Center.
So moved.
Mr. Henderson, you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Degru, any discussion? All right, roll call please.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Degru?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
All right, number eight's public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please look at, line up at the microphone, state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. Motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Second.
Deputy Director Space, moves. Commissioner Degru, seconds, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, carries. Anyone from the public on agenda topics? All right, seeing none. Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment?
So moved.
Mr. Henderson, you have a second?
Second.
Deputy Director Space, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Abstain, carries. Number nine, Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Henderson, we'll start with you.
Okay, just a couple of quick things for me. On the 27th of February, I attended the VOTAC meeting regarding their budget. On March 3, I had the opportunity to sit with the CFO, our County Administrator, and Tony to go over the county budget. I thanked them a lot for bringing me up to speed on the county budget. On March 5, I met with the SCUMA at their meeting. I know you guys all receive a copy of their minutes. If you have any questions you want me to take back to their boards, I'd be happy to do that. On March 5, I was at Sussex County Community College, met with David Hasslip. I see he has since left after the Executive Board meeting. He is a school veteran certifying official at the college. He's responsible for all the vets coming in. If anybody has a vet that is looking to go back to school, I can tell you this is a man they want to talk to. The man is a phenomenal man, and certainly has the vets at heart. I can sit here and say I've never been a vet, but I can tell you thank you to all of you that have. I think we can't say that enough. On March 8, we all walked in the county parade in Newton for St. Patrick's Day. On March 10, at 6:30 in the morning, I met with Deputy Director Jill Space. We met with Facilities. It was my goal to meet with every employee of this county, and within three months, I'm going to tell you, I will accomplish that goal. We weren't done then. We went back at 4 o'clock to meet with the second shift, and back again that night for 6:00 PM budget meeting here as well. On Saturday or Sunday, I don't remember what day we went, we went to the German Christmas Market at the Fairgrounds. They raised funds for nonprofits. They gave money away to 56 different organizations. I forget what the total amount they gave away was.
All said and done, it was $770,000. This year alone was $159,000.
So the county was lucky to get $2,000 for the county food pantry. Exceptional group of people. At first, I had the opportunity to attend one of their events. What they're doing for the county is absolutely incredible. If you have a chance, please support that Christmas market, because they're giving a lot back to every organization in this county. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Hayden?
Okay, so last week, you attended two meetings, the election board, one of them Commissioner Carney attended, who were productive moving things forward there. Sussex County Library System wrapped up its winter challenge, and a total of 3,302 books were read, total participants 325, events held 202, and attendees 1961. So there are a lot of people still reading.
Thank you. Commissioner Degru?
Yes, starting with the NJTPA, North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority, an update there. I'm pleased to share that I had my NJTPA orientation last Thursday. I want to extend my gratitude to Executive Director David Brehnen and his team for traveling all the way up to our beloved Sussex County to meet with me, our county engineer, planner, and deputy engineer. The meeting was highly informative, particularly regarding Sussex County's projects within NJTPA's Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP. Key projects include the Lackawanna Cut Off Rail Project, Route 15 Bridge over Paul's Kill in Lafayette, and the Route 206 Bridge in Frankfurt, among others. Additionally, I was brought up to speed on local community projects, LCP, which include local safety rural roads projects, safe routes to school projects, and transportation alternatives set aside projects. Many municipalities within our county actively engage with these programs, and it was great to learn how Sussex County could further assist in their progress. Overall, it was a productive meeting, and really look forward to NJTPA in this continued collaboration with our county departments on planning efforts. In addition, this past Monday, we held our NJTPA bi-monthly meeting, where we would discuss minor amendments to the 2024-2027 Transportation Improvement Program, approval of the fiscal year 2026 Unified Planning Work Program as well. In addition, some Sussex County capital budget update. Commissioner Hayden and I finalized our capital budget discussions within the Capital Budget Subcommittee 13 days ago. This past Monday, as mentioned, we presented this information at the public hearing to our full Board of County Commissioners. I myself believe the capital budget reflects our commitment to infrastructure and critical investments needed to maintain the highest level of service to our taxpayers. Additionally, as mentioned, we had the public hearing this past Monday. I thought it went really well. Division of Senior Services, Center for Lifelong Learning. The Division of Senior Services continues its partnership with Sussex County Community College to provide educational opportunities for seniors through the Center of Lifelong Learning. A special event is coming up Saturday, April 5, 2025. It will be a luncheon at the Arbor Restaurant, seating between 11:00 AM and 11:30 AM, followed by a spring musical, You're a Good Man, Charlie Brown, at 2:00 PM in the Performing Arts Center. The cost for both the lunch and the show is $45. To make a reservation, visit SCC Center for Lifelong Learning website, or call the Arbor Restaurant at 973-300-3171. Aside from this, just some recent events and community engagement. I attended Hamburg Council meeting as a liaison. It was a great opportunity to connect with the municipality and discuss local concerns earlier this month. March is Read Across America Month, and I had a privilege to read to students at Northern Hills Academy over in Sparta last Thursday. I shared one of my favorite books, Why Do Rabbits Hop?, which I highly recommend, rooting for my 4-H days. That is all. Thank you. God bless.
Why do they hop there, Commissioner?
I'll have to rent you the book.
Deputy Director Space?
Thank you. Some of mine is a little repetitious from the others, so I'll be quick going through it. Alan did miss saying that Commissioner Henderson and I visited the Board of Elections, Tax Board, Sussex County Clerk, Hall of Records, Office of Records Management, Social Services, and the Syracuse Office. These visits allow us to see firsthand what they all do on a daily basis, and showed us a behind-the-scenes view of our county infrastructure. On March 1, Director Carney, myself, Ron Tappan, Christina Marks hosted a mayor's meeting, which 14 mayors attended. Autumn Sylvester and Bill Copenall from Engineering and Planning were the guest speakers. We also had an update from Trenton from Assemblywoman Dawn Fantasia. It was nice to be able to sit down and have open dialogue with the mayors. On March 2, I attended the New Jersey Outdoor Alliance 2025 Annual Wild Game Dinner, and no, I did not eat any wild game. On March 4, I attended Catholic Charities' March for Meals event at the Franklin Food Pantry, where Meals on Wheels partners with staff and food pantry volunteers all came together to support seniors in need, and then delivered meals. On March 5, I attended Read Across America at Wantage Elementary School. I read the book Ralph Space, The Legend, to 3rd and 5th graders. It was an excellent opportunity to promote the importance of reading, and I learned the hard way that you really should read the book yourself before you read it to a classroom of children, because you might have to skip some parts, like shooting out the street lamps in Branchville back in 1950. So I would have kept that out, but I guess it could be worse. On March 8, Commissioners Carney, Henderson, Degru, and I marched at the well-attended St. Patrick's Day Parade put on by Newton Fire Department. Thank you to our Chief of Staff Christina Marks and her daughters for walking along with us. Also, on March 8, I attended the installation dinner of Stillwater Fire Department and EMS. Their line officers were all sworn in by Mayor Lisa Chamings. Many received awards, including two CPR saves. So we are very thankful for all our first responders in Sussex County. On March 10, at 6:30 AM, when Alan had booked that meeting with Facilities, I thought, oh, 6:30, no big deal. Well, little did I realize it was the day after the time change, so it was really like 5:30, Alan and I were at a meeting. But that was good. And then back for our 4 o'clock meeting. And like I said, it's beneficial for us to hear what they have to say and what their job duties are. There's no better way to understand county government than meeting with the dedicated employees who do the day-to-day work. Also, on March 10, we had our special public presentation of the county's 2025 budget. Thank you to every department head, County Administrator Ron Tappan, Deputy Administrator Lorraine Hens, Clerk of the Board Christina Marks, CFO Elka Yetter, and Tony Grisafi, and my fellow commissioners for all the work that has gone into this process. We started back in September with these budget meetings, and we are looking forward to approving the budget next month. And then finally, yesterday, I attended the Sussex County Chamber of Commerce Business-to-Business Breakfast sponsored by Newton Medical Center. As I've said many times, I highly recommend joining the chamber. It's a great resource for small businesses and networking throughout the county. Tammy Horstfield does a great job. And my Social Services, Division of Social Services Backpack Snacks for Kids, 10th Annual Food Drive, WNNJ 103.7, WSUS 102.3, and the Bear 106.3 will host the 10th Annual Backpack Snacks for Kids Food Drive at the Weiss Market in Franklin and Newton on Saturday, March 22, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The Backpack Snacks for Kids program provides children in Sussex County with meals and snacks for the weekend, and is all possible thanks to our generous community and a team of dedicated volunteers at the Social Services Food Pantry. Items such as meals in a can, soup, oatmeal, granola bars, and apple sauce are packaged in a snack-sized container and distributed to children in participating school districts to bring home at the end of the week. The food pantry distributes approximately 1,300 backpack snacks each month donated from the Backpack Snacks for Kids Food Drive, goes directly to Sussex County children in need. And then they had put the German Christmas Market, but Alan already touched on it. I want to thank Alan and Chris and Christine Florio for attending that. The food pantry at the Division of Social Services provides food to residents in need throughout Sussex County. If anyone is in need of food for themselves or their family, they can stop by the Division of Social Services located at 83 Spring Street in Newton from 8:30 to 4:30 PM Monday through Friday. Food or pet donations are accepted during these hours, or special arrangements can be made for after-hours donations by calling 973-383-3600. Division of Community and Youth Services, the Department of Health and Human Services, through its various divisions, administrators' grants that directly benefit Sussex County residents of all ages under the leadership and advisement of the Sussex County Commissioner Board. Over the past year, Executive County Superintendent of School, Dr. Gail Carrick has been an active partner with the Department of Health and Human Services staff, bringing together various aspects of county government, and creating a cost-effective, sustainable intervention to address widespread vaping, which can have detrimental effects in our county schools. Dr. Carrick continues to support the department in initiatives being funded through the county's opioid settlement funding authorized by the Commissioners to bring quality, evidence-based prevention and intervention services in the areas of substance abuse, mental health, and co-occurring to support our students here in the county. And we received two letters of thank yous from local school districts for the program, and one was from Sussex Wantage, and one was from Lafayette School. Division of Health, Office of Public Health Nursing Clinics. A child health clinic will be held Tuesday, March 25, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the Office of Public Health Nursing, 201 Wheatsworth Road, Hamburg. The clinic offers complete physical exams, screenings, and age-appropriate immunizations for children from birth to five years old. Services are free for those who are uninsured. To learn more about this clinic or to schedule an appointment, call the Office of Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570, extension 1275. The Health Check Clinic will be held on Tuesday, March 25, 2025, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM at the Office of Public Health Nursing, 201 Wheatsworth Road, Hamburg. This clinic offers vaccines for adults and school-aged children. There is no fee for vaccines if uninsured or underinsured. The clinic also offers a variety of health screenings. To learn more about this clinic or schedule an appointment, call the Office of Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570, extension 1275. And finally, the Division of Senior Services Peer Support Group for Sussex County Veterans. Veterans of all ages are invited to attend a monthly peer support group for Sussex County veterans on the 4th Wednesday of each month from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM on the first floor of the Sussex County Administrative Center in Newton. This support group provides veterans a unique opportunity for camaraderie, and the opportunity to learn about the programs and services that are available to Sussex County veterans. This program is sponsored by the County of Sussex. To learn more about this program and to register your attendance at the next meeting on March 26, 2025, please call the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1135. And that is it. Thank you.
Deputy Director, I'll start with Engineering and Planning. The Division of Public Works is initiating spring tasks required for compliance with Sussex County Highway Agents of Stormwater Program. TPW has kicked off of the street sweeping program, litter control programs. You'll be seeing county sweepers along all our routes next month. Additionally, crews have begun collecting litter along county routes. The permit requires the county to sweep and clean up litter along all 620 lane miles of county routes. Division of Public Works is currently preparing for stormwater system repair in a borough of Andover. Work will include the replacement of older corrugated metal stormwater pipes with new plastic pipes, and a construction of adjacent stormwater inlets. The work will take place at Signalized Intersection of County Route 517, also known as Brighton Avenue, West High Street, and County Route 606, also known as High Street. Work will disrupt the normal flow of traffic and require daily closures and detour of County Route 606 between 206 and 517. This one's a good one. This is the Office of Bridge and Traffic Safety began construction for the replacement of Sussex County Bridge X20 on Berry Road in Wantage. I think this has been out since Sandy, right? Right? So it's been a long time coming. If you ever have to go to detour, which I do all the time, work will be ongoing throughout the year. The project is expected to be completed, and the bridge reopened late 2025, or spring of '26, either one. Project completion will be dependent upon availability of materials, DEP permits, restrictions, advancement of work, emergency needs, and weather. The Division of Engineering held a pre-construction meeting for the 2024 Resurfacing Program, which is scheduled for construction this year. The program includes resurfacing of 23.5 miles of county routes, including segments of 517 Newton-Sparta Road in Sparta, 519 Branchville-Louisburg Road in Branchville and Frankfurt, 606 Andover-Brighton Road in Andover and Green, 613 Andover-Mohawk Road in Byram and Andover, 617 Stillwater-Fareview Lake Road in Stillwater, 623 Sunset Inn Road in Andover and Lafayette, 628 Branchville-Louisburg Road in Wantage, 629 Wykertown Road in Frankfurt, 646 Sandiston Road in Sandiston, 650 Liberty Plumstock Road in Wantage, 656 Shattown Road in Sandiston. The sequence of work is currently being developed between the contractor and Division of Engineering. Work is expected to begin on or about April 15, and completed by mid-July. Work on County Route 517, Newton-Sparta Road between Route 181 and 616 will be completed as night work between hours of 7:00 PM and 5:30 AM. All other routes are scheduled for daytime work between the hours of 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM, and Division of Engineering will be publishing project status updates on the county website. So please be patient when you're going through those areas, whether it be night or day. I just want to touch on Commissioner Henderson. We did go to the German Christmas Market. Like I said, they've given out a lot of money over the years. I think they've only been around for four years?
No, I think they started 2001.
Was it that long ago? All right. Well, it was $770,000 that they gave out, $159 this year, and we were able to get $2,000 to go towards our food pantry. We're in need of money and donations, so anybody out there who wants to donate to the food pantry, we would appreciate that. As Jill said, mayor's meeting went very well. It's a bipartisan thing for all the mayors or council presidents to come out, everybody in the county. We invite everybody, all 24 municipalities, to come out, discuss what their concerns are, shared services, and so on and so forth. We went over the state plan, which is coming out this year, which is a big deal for the county, because we would like to have a say in what the state is doing. So it was very big, good meeting. I have an NJAC meeting on Friday. I think Ron's coming, and Christine's coming with me in Jersey City, a luncheon. And just to touch again on the budget, as Deputy Director Space said, if you guys want to come, our introduction will be at our next meeting this month. It is a very good budget. I assume it will pass. I'm hoping it will pass. We've got a lot accomplished done. You know, we're hoping that our tax rate as of now will be down another year, which is very good. It's a good budget, so if you're interested in the budget, come to our meeting, and you could hear about it. So that is all I have. All right, moving on. Number 10, Approval Consent Agenda. There is none. Number 11 is Approval Minutes. This is from our regular meeting from February 13, 2025, and our regular meeting from February 26, 2025. Motion to approve the minutes from the meeting.
So moved.
Deputy Director Space, you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Degru, any discussion?
Yes. When I sat in the audience here, all these people are sitting, I brought up meeting after meeting the fact the minutes were not online for everybody to read. We brought it up for the last three meetings that I've sat here. We're making great strides, but we're still missing the entire month of June of 2024, and it's still not there.
So everything's been updated? We just maybe have to go back in and make sure the link is pulling it through, but I personally went in and saw everything had been uploaded.
Okay, it's not showing it tonight yet.
Okay, all right, so we can just go back.
Anyone else? All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, carries. Number 12, ordinance, there is none. Number 13, appointments and or resignations, there are none. Number 14, resolutions. All right, can I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through J?
So moved.
Deputy Director Space, you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Henderson, any discussion?
J, why in March I'm doing this?
Why in March?
Yeah. What happened that precipitated this?
There's some conflicts of what people can do with schedules. Schedules have changed, so this was the easiest way to make sure we had a liaison for every entity that we need to. So this worked out in the best of our ability. We talked about this last week, I thought, or last meeting?
No.
On Monday.
I was in the hospital.
Oh, that's why. You weren't here. Well, we talked about that, and so this will work out to benefit everybody.
Okay.
All right. Any more discussion? All right, roll call then.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Degru?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
No.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
All right, 15, awards of contract change orders, bids are none. Number 16 is Payment of Bills List. This is Resolution A from March 12, 2025. Motion to pay bills list A.
So moved.
You have a second? Deputy Director Space, you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Henderson, any discussion? All right, roll call please.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Degru?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
All right, this is Payment of Bills List B. This is from March 12, 2025.
So moved.
Got to get a motion to pay bills list B.
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, you have a second? Commissioner Degru, any discussion? All right, roll call please.
Deputy Director Space?
Abstain.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Degru?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
All right, 17, Personnel. Resolution A, this is Personnel Agenda of 31225. Motion to approve the Personnel Agenda.
So moved.
Deputy Director Space?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Degru, any discussion? Roll call please.
Deputy Director Space?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Degru?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Number 18, Administrative Report. Uh, number eighteen, administrative report.
Um, my report, everything I have to do tonight is going to be covered in new business. Okay? So we'll transfer to that.
Perfect. Nineteen, county council?
Two items. Two items. Uh, first, uh, the board is aware we have an ongoing relationship with the Homestead, uh, and, uh, we have a contract, an ongoing contract with them, uh, related to soar usage. They're in default of it. Um, we've put them on notice before, uh, but I'm looking for, uh, the commissioner's consent to send them, uh, a letter advising that if they don't bring themselves current that they may be subject to, uh, termination of the agreement.
You speak up, I can't hear you. You guys have to use your microphones.
Okay. Um, the, uh, county is in a agreement with an entity called the Homestead, uh, which is a nursing home. Uh, the agreement provides that they are to reimburse the county for soar usage. Uh, the Homestead is in default of that agreement. I'm asking for the commissioner's approval to send a letter advising them that they are in default and threatening them with a breach in the event they don't bring themselves current. So I just need a motion and a second, and I'll get the letter out the door tomorrow.
I'll move it.
How seconds?
Commissioner Henderson, seconds? Uh, I guess all in favor, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, carries.
Secondly, I need, yeah.
Just, just give me a second. Can we make that louder, or is there any way?
It's all, it's all the way up.
Fine, I'll speak a little closer.
I think we just have to move the mics closer.
Uh, secondly, I just want to correct the record. Uh, Mr. Collins got up earlier and spoke on item seven, and I think he was confusing, uh, tax increases with the cap bank. Just want to be very clear what, what that's all about. Uh, item seven, the state law allows governing bodies to increase their expenses, uh, not their taxes, uh, automatically by a cost of living adjustment of two and a half percent, uh, or three and a half percent by a resolution where the extra one percent is effectively banked or saved, uh, in the event that expenses, uh, unanticipated expenses are higher, uh, than the two and a half percent that the law allows the county to save or set aside each year. Uh, for instance, if pension, uh, expenses are higher in a given year and, and force the county over its two and a half percent cost of living adjustment, uh, then the bank would allow them to make sure that they don't run behind, uh, in, in their expenditures. By the same token, uh, if health insurance costs, uh, run higher in a given year in two thousand and twenty-five, for instance, the state health benefit plan increase was sixteen point three percent, uh, and while this county doesn't participate in state health benefits plans, it forces a lot of other governing bodies to become pretty close on their caps. Uh, I, I, many of you have probably followed in the news that the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities is contemplating increases, uh, for the coming year in utility expenses, anywhere from ten to twenty percent. Uh, all those things are, are unanticipated or unexpected expenses that may put the county, uh, in a precarious spot regarding its expenditures. So the cap bank is simply allowing the county to save that one percent delta and set it aside to make sure that it doesn't run, uh, or default on, uh, its expended, set aside expenditures. It has absolutely nothing to do, uh, with a three and a half percent tax increase. That's all.
Thank you, and this is something that we do every year, and grateful we have not used it, so thank you for explaining that. Uh, who do do? Number twenty, unfinished business. Do you have any unfinished? Nope, all right, good. Number twenty-one's new business. Do we have any new business?
I do. Um, as we talked previously, I need to have a resolution approved tonight on behalf of the building of the Sheriff's Transfer Station. Um, we have a, we have wetlands out there, and we have to make a application to DEP for a wetlands application. I need a resolution authorizing the director to sign that, that license so that we can send it to DEP tomorrow and get that project going. So if I could have a motion to do that, I would be greatly appreciating to get that project going.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Deputy Director Space, Commissioner DeGroot, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, carries.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Perfect. Thank you. Keep us posted on that. All right, number twenty-two is public session. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone, state your name and municipality for the record. Motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Mr. Henderson, Deputy Director Space, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, carries. Uh, just one second before anybody gets up, or you have the timer. So you'll see on these TVs that your time will, you'll have, maybe, maybe you'll have three minutes. And then she'll warn you at one if you don't see. So. Line up at the microphone. Go ahead. All right. It's, it is, it actually just, it records an hour system. It's not, you have to be very, like, okay. It's for our recording.
Is there a limit on how many people could speak, or, because I'm going to wait to the very end because I have leg problems.
Everybody can speak, everybody can speak for three minutes.
Thank you.
But you can't get up and use like four different three minutes, and you don't, we don't, we don't allow people to like swap their three minutes and give everybody three minutes. So.
Oh, you got that, I see. There you go.
I just ask that please make sure you're stating your name and your, uh, location.
Okay, Michelle Van Allen, uh, I live in Hardeston, need my street address, or just Hardeston? Okay. Uh, just a couple of questions about what you talked about tonight. What was the thing you just said about wetlands, that you're doing a resolution about wetlands? Where is that and what's happening with wetlands? Can you explain that to us? Because you're...
We're not going to explain anything tonight. This is, there's a lot of people here, obviously.
Sure.
Public comment, but what we can do, if you want to email Ron, we can get that information here.
Okay, because wetlands are important if you're doing away with wetlands, that's...
No, 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 no.
Okay. And also about the Homestead, uh, I know it's a nursing home. I'm not sure if it's privately owned, or it is, okay? And, um, I know that probably a lot of the, uh, people in there are Medicaid recipients. Um, they're probably going to be in danger, not only from what's happening in our federal government right now by losing that, um, funding, but it's going to put the Homestead in danger of being able to pay their bills to begin with. So I'm not sure why they're in arrears, but, um, I know that there's people in there that are going to be affected, not only by the government, by what, but also what we would do here, so, um, just a concern because the Homestead's been around for many years. A lot of people have been through there, and I'd hate to see it disappear, um, over a water sewer bill if, um, they're really having an issue. So, um, you have the details behind the scene, we don't, but I just know with Medicaid funding being cut, it's going to be a problem for the people that are in there. So I hope you take all that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Pamela Gray, Stillwater. I come from a long line of educators. My grandmother was a teacher. My father was one of the initial teachers when High Point Regional High School opened its doors, and my mother retired as High Point's principal after spending her entire career there. I followed in their footsteps and spent thirty-three years in this county teaching before my retirement. So clearly I have a vested interest in the students of Sussex County. Our current president is attempting through executive power to abolish the Department of Education without congressional action. One of the department's main roles is to support students with disabilities by making sure that they get the services which will guarantee their success. So I'm here tonight to ask you to recognize that the majority of the financial resources that this Department of Ed regulates is to special ed students in our communities. As a leader, as leaders and local elected officials, it is your job to research the implications of what this would do to our local population, which include a high percentage of students who receive these services and be prepared for it. You are tasked as our commissioners with educating yourselves about the impact that these decisions will have locally, and I can tell you as someone who is in the trenches of public education, removing funding for our special needs students at the federal level will impact our students at the local level. Abolishing this department will directly impact all of our students, most especially our low-income families who rely on these services. I implore you to use your voices to advocate for our students. Last week, I listened to the President of the United States call the Department of Education a big con job. It was demeaning, it was weaponizing, and it was degrading for the hundred thousand-plus teachers in New Jersey who have dedicated their lives to education. Teachers are not con artists, and we do not indoctrinate, and using those words is divisive and insulting. Teachers are society's heroes. They spend their days undertaking the greatest act of optimism, the belief that it is through education that we improve our world. Every colleague I have ever worked with in this county, regardless of their political ideology, had one common trait: they knew the importance of their job. Education is not filling a mind. It is inspiring our students to have an open mind. As public servants, I implore all of you to remember that what affects one member of our community affects us all. Education should never be compromised, demonized, or politicized. As FDR once said, "The school is the last expenditure upon which America should be willing to economize."
Wow, it's hard to go after that. Ken Collins, Andover, New Jersey. Mr. Steinhardt, I appreciate your explanation, uh, as I'm sure others do as well. Good evening and thank you for listening. First and foremost, I would like to ask for Commissioner Hayden's resignation yet again. When you pose as a veteran and you're not one, you dishonor your nation, and you don't deserve to hold public, public office. You should resign immediately. Second, I just wanted to let you know...
We just want to switch.
Just one second, we'll give you your time back. Maybe, Karen, can you just try that one? They're saying, they're saying connected, right? Is this thing on?
Sorry, didn't blow it out, did I?
You're talking a little close to it.
I'll explain why in just a second.
Hope the rest might be excited enough.
Oh, there you go.
Down, down. Is it this one or that one?
Try talking in, yeah.
Check, there we go.
I got it. Let's get this one out of the way. Put that one in here. There you go. Nope, and it's dead, yeah.
You took the wrong one.
You took, uh, no, you didn't take the wrong one. This was on, and then as soon as I went in to speak to it, I definitely woke them.
If you can.
They're dead. It's me. All right, you're just going to have to talk, I'm sorry about that. All right. These, these just aren't like those. These mics will pick everything up for recording. All right, second, I just want to let you know that the audio on recent YouTube videos on Sussex County's YouTube channel with commissioner meetings is practically inaudible. Listening back to the last meeting of February twenty-sixth, which I attended, commissioners' microphones were off or not spoken into, and I had to turn the volume all the way up on my TV and all the way up on the stereo just to be able to strain, to try to make out what was being said, and I couldn't make out something. You have to make sure the recording is being done at an audible level. And third, I think it would be a great idea for you to create a Sussex County Department of Government Efficiency. While you may pride yourselves in keeping your annual tax increase to less than whatever percent you keep it to, um, maybe it's time to cut out some waste in county spending. There's never been a year, to my recollection, since before the turn of the century, except maybe last year, I'm not sure, where Sussex County has not raised taxes. There might have been one in there. High property taxes for average homeowners is the number one concern. For once, we would love to hear you tell us, "We cut the budget, we're reducing property taxes for homeowner, owners," but it just never seems to happen. We need lower property taxes. Thanks, I appreciate your time.
Sandy Kender, Friedon Township. Um, good evening, I want to start by saying thank you for allowing us all to speak tonight. I'm here to speak on behalf of Sussex County's LGBTQ plus community. The number of executive orders that have been signed since January twentieth are dizzying. Despite the fact that these are not bills nor laws yet, their scope and intention are extremely disturbing. A large number of them disempower gay, transgender, and non-binary citizens, and they also push to remove information and educational material that support and validate this marginalized group. There is a particular executive order that specifically focuses on educational censorship and book banning in an effort to end radical indoctrination. Its goal is to remove and prohibit any materials that discuss gender or sexual orientation or anything that the administration deems offensive. The current administration is attempting to suppress free expression and impose ideological conformity on its citizens. They are attempting to suppress people by controlling access to information. I ask you to consider the potential impacts this executive order would have on the citizens of our county. We currently have a funding problem with our public schools. What if the federal government decides to withhold federal funding in an effort to strong-arm schools into complying with their educational censorship? This would mean either vowing to the powers that be or enduring more funding cuts to our schools. What about our county library system and all of the citizens that utilize their services? Would they also be subjected to being investigated and having books and other materials removed? I read somewhere that a book acts as either a mirror or a window. When it acts like a mirror, you can see yourself represented in its pages. When a book acts like a window, it allows the reader to see alternate experiences and viewpoints. When our library system and schools have books and curriculums that are wide-ranging, LGBTQ people can see themselves represented and feel included. Those same books and curriculum can help other people imagine and better understand experiences and feelings that are different from their own. I urge you to thoroughly read the wording of these executive orders. The powers that be want them to read as patriotic and protective, when in reality they are misleading and discriminatory. I ask you to be steadfast in your oath to uphold the law and to represent all of your constituents, particularly the large LGBT, LGBTQ plus community of Sussex County. Should these executive orders violate the civil rights of our citizens, I ask that you use your voice to protest them. Thank you.
My, my name is Walter Drag, I'm from Wantage, and I have a couple of items that have just come up incidentally to me the last, uh, week or two. The first one, current season, uh, I would hope that in the future, if you have executive session, that it's planned to, to be an hour before the regular session where all our citizens... I would like the executive session to be held an hour before the, uh, time of the regular meeting where all our citizens are here and would like to go and have input. And a lot of people now, some people have left, it just kind of puts, put me off for sure. And so you can either, uh, do it like they do in Wantage after the meeting. Apparently, executive session had a bearing on the resolutions tonight, so I would plan to come in at five o'clock so that when you're here and present, you can all proceed with the regular meeting. That's my one, my one point. I have two minutes to go. Uh, it's come to my attention, and I'm not sure when this went through, whether it was collaborated with Sussex County, uh, Union representation, but there, there's been an order apparently that all county employees are required to come to work five days a five days a week with no longer telework. It would seem to me that it would be a perk in Sussex County's processes that we have at least one day a week where employees are allowed to work at home. There's been, I don't think, any degradation of service been shown, been shown to require that we come to work, and maybe related to COVID, the way things were done before. But I think it would be advantageous for some of our employees to be able to go and use electronics to telework, and-
One minute.
And that is it, and I thank you very much for listening to me.
You have one minute left, sir.
All right, well, if you have any- You're welcome to comment back to me if you have any initial impressions. Thank you.
Kathy Brennan, Hampton Township. I wanted to address concerns over the draconian, dogged freezes or cuts. We would all like to see unnecessary waste eliminated. However, taking a chainsaw to all federal programs is certainly not the answer. Unlike many other economic measures, in this case, there will be a drastic trickle-down effect that will affect not our state as well as our county. My concerns include cuts to programs that assist seniors, veterans, farmers, schoolchildrens, feed the poor, and that is just to name a few, because I only have three minutes. I could go on and on for three hours. And it, um, we are lucky in our county, and we should also be very grateful that we do have the angel donor who provides for our food pantry. And of course, to make it short, I just have to add that any discussion of waste, fraud, and abuse should include one of our, one of our very own county commissioners, who was accused of fraud with stolen valor, who wastes time by doing nothing that helps the county, and abuses his position to go after the food pantry with baseless allegations. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nick Di Fabrizio. I live in Augusta. I'm not a particularly political person, but I have been a practicing attorney for 40 years. About half of that time, I was a bond counsel doing municipal finance, so I know how hard your job is. The other half, I'm a senior vice president at First Citizens Bank, so I have a lot of corporate experience as well. My experience has been that rural communities like this often underestimate the degree to which federal dollars flow through the budget in indirect ways. Directly, I'm sure you have a handle on it, but indirect ways that federal dollars flow through our programs and our people to support our programs is sometimes hard to predict and to get a handle on. I also believe that there's a fundamental difference between how a government entity is run, like a county, and how a corporate entity is run. And the kinds of cuts that you might do in a, in a corporate entity, like we're seeing today in Washington, I don't think are necessarily appropriate to deal with a governmental entity. And so I would urge everyone here, and all of you, to reach out to anyone you can in Washington, to give them a poke and to kind of convince them to slow down a little bit. We all know there's waste and abuse in every level of government, but we also know that the vast majority of people who work for government, including at this level and at the federal level, are really good people. And they do a very difficult job, and most of what government does is very good. So I would ask that we should slow down and take a hard look at what we can do to cut waste, but not do it in such a willy-nilly, extreme fashion that we're seeing in Washington now. Because the unanticipated consequences of what is, what they're doing, I think, is going to be very harsh on rural communities like ours. So I would just urge everyone here and all of you to reach out to your representatives and anyone else you know in Washington-
One minute.
-to try to get them to slow this process down, and let's take a harder look at things before we take action. Thank you.
Jean Aupryage, Hampton Township. I am here tonight because we are in a constitutional crisis that Americans must be aware of and actively work to stop. Donald Trump is moving at full speed to destroy this nation. Trump's actions at the federal level will have a devastating effect on our community. Our county commission should be actively trying to stop Trump's threat to our country. We are gathered here tonight in the county seat. We are a microcosm of the nation. Here in Newton, we have foundational institutions, such as the county courthouse, the sheriff's department, county college, and a relatively full-service hospital, just to name a few. These institutions were created to operate for the public good. Any attempt to improve them on the local level would be taken seriously. We would not take a chainsaw to them or fire half of the staff. We would not appoint individuals to leadership positions whose goal would be to close the courthouse, fire sheriff's officers, shutter school doors, and reduce medical services at our hospital. We know that these institutions are crucial to our well-being and need to protect them to ensure our safety, security, education, and health. But on the national level, these institutions are under attack, and it will negatively impact us on the local level. Trump fired federal prosecutors, FBI agents, and inspectors generals who faithfully served our interests and worked to keep us safe from wide range, a wide range of threats. When those departments at the federal level disappear, how will you, as county freeholders, plan to keep us safe when our local departments no longer have information, resources, and collaboration with national institutions? Trump vigorously attacks colleges and universities as he promotes an anti-intellectual agenda. When his attacks come to our county college, our county college's front doors, what will you do to protect our professors and students to maintain a rigorous, well-rounded, and free-minded education system for our youth? Trump slashed the Department of Education and intends to illegally close it. When those funds disappear from our county schools, how will the freeholders ensure that our children have the educational opportunities that they need and deserve to become informed and productive members of society? Trump appointed an enemy to modern medicine, to the Department of Health and Human Services, and is cutting the Social Security Administration. His actions threaten our healthcare system and the lives of all Americans. How do you freeholders intend to keep our local hospital and nursing facilities doors open and operating with the highest level of care possible for our county residents, especially those who rely on Social Security, Medicaid, and Medicare? I ask you to send a formal resolution-
Time.
-to the President, telling him to stop.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you this evening.
Sir, if you could just let us your name?
My name's David D. Widdow from Hampton Township. I'd like to know what our Sussex County community can expect as our federal government is dismantled and reassembled in a chaotic and self-serving method by an unelected billionaire. What federal and state pass-through funds are incorporated in our county budget? I'd like those identified. As a wishful thinking, we will continue to see these dollars support our necessary and vital departments. As of yesterday, on the governor's website, our governor's, he announced that the New Jersey Department of Agriculture will not be receiving $9.9 million in local food purchase assistance funding. And we will not be receiving $16.2 million in local Food for Schools Cooperative Agreement funding for the fiscal year 2025. Is the county going to pick up this shortfall? Where will the monies come from? Or should we just plan for our students and neighbors to go hungry? Will we see other programs supporting small farms, infrastructure projects, conservation, climate resilience efforts, veterans' benefits, educational support, and other agricultural programs wither and die on the vine also? Administration promises to keep vital programs alive in the future mean absolutely nothing if the agencies tasked with distribution of the resources have been abolished or are no longer-
One minute. One minute.
-efficiently staffed to function. How do you distribute education dollars for handicapped students is no longer an education department? Who's kidding who here? Secondarily, and more important, the criminal freezing of congressional appropriation funds to thousands of nonprofits and NGOs all over the country will extinguish those organizations. Right now, there are 2,600 programs frozen, even in defiance of a federal court restraining order that they have to pay out the money that was promised by Congress duly appointed. This is illegal and criminal. Doesn't surprise me, since we elected a criminal as a president. How can we have a bunch of DEI and climate change guy, oh, excuse me, for certain, a computer word search for the DEI or climate change by a band of 20-year-old tech bros is hardly a reasonable criteria for funding any organization? I oppose all this. Say it with me. I oppose this.
Scott Knoll, Sparta. Sorry, this is going to be a little bit redundant for some of the other stuff. But I did want to thank you guys first. I mean, I realize that you guys do a tremendous amount of work on a volunteer basis, and- Now, now, now with the time they put in. Okay, you guys do a lot, and I recognize that, and I'm grateful for it. Veterans came up a couple of times. The number of services available in this county, and you offered your thanks. You're welcome. I have a vested interest in veterans, and as a number of people have brought up, there's a lot of cuts going on, and the veteran administration in particular has been targeted. My ask would be, there's a lot of need in the veteran community, and it's very important that those needs are met on a consistent basis. A lot of those folks are struggling. And I would ask that you make provision to maintain those services and the personnel to provide them, even in the face of cuts that are coming. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Mary Turk from Wantage Township. I'm here to comment on the telecommuting policy for the county employees. Maintaining a telecommuting policy is essential, not only for staff well-being, but also for an overall productivity and efficiency of the county. Employees choose to work for the county, not for financial advancement, but for the promise of work-life balance and improved quality of life and meaningful career opportunities. This balance is critical to retaining dedicated employees who are committed to public service. However, morale is already at an all-time low, and the removal of yet another workplace benefit threatens to diminish it even further. A strong telecommuting policy enhances productivity by allowing employees to work in a focused, flexible environment while also reducing stress associated with commuting. It also leads to cost savings for the county, reducing expenses related to office space and utilities. Additionally, fewer commuters means less traffic congestion and a positive environmental impact. At a time when workplace morale is fragile, preserving telecommuting is not just about convenience, it's about maintaining a workplace that feels valued, engaged, and motivated to serve the community effectively. Thank you.
Susan Bassett, Sandyston. Doug, you said something about Homestead. Could you, I did not hear all of it. Could you tell me what they're behind on?
Uh, yeah, their quarterly sewer payments.
Their quarterly sewer payments? Okay. So I want to speak, first of all, I want to say ditto on everything that everybody else said. But I want to speak specifically about my mother, who is 87 years old, going to be 88, and currently at Homestead, and has been paying into her social security since she was the ripe old age of 15, and is currently on Medicaid, although I currently also send them $6,000 a month. But Medicaid covers what I can't pay. Since Medicaid is handled through the county, which is you guys, what is your plan in the event that the orange one gets rid of Medicaid? I want to know what the plan is. Because my mother has advancing Alzheimer's as well as multiple sclerosis. I had to call the police before I put her in nursing home. I had to call the police multiple times to help me get her off the floor, because I couldn't lift her up. I cannot physically care for her at home, but I might not have that opportunity. I might have to care for her at home, because I can't afford $12,000 or whatever Homestead charges a month. So what is your plan in the event that the orange one cancels Medicaid and gets rid of social security? Because then I won't be able to send that to them either. Oh, and Medicare, yeah. All three of those programs that help support my mother, which she's been paying into, by the way. What are you guys going to do? I would like an answer. I know you're not going to give me one tonight, but you should have a plan in place in the event that all these programs are cut. Because people's lives matter, and people are going to be devastated. And not just the people that directly affect it, like my mother, but myself as well, as I try to haul her down the stairs. You guys are responsible for this. And as Republicans, you support the orange one, and you shouldn't.
Julie Clausen, also Sandyston, New Jersey. And echoing, I think, about what everybody's speaking to here and asking for is a plan, to know what you're going to do. So I have two issues I'd like to speak to today. First, I want to speak about the hope that you in this room will protect our schoolchildren. With the impending executive order to abolish the Department of Education, I'm left with concerns about how our children will be affected. The DOE distributes federal funding, supports students with disabilities, and enforces civil rights protections in education. I'm here to ask you to make a plan and make that plan known. I want to know the plan to ensure that students across our county will have needs and accommodations necessary for them to receive a full and abundant education, and that those needs are taken care of. I want to know the plan for protecting students' rights to access materials, books, and ideas that may not be in line with our current administration. I want to know the plan for a district, I want to know the plan for a disruption in funding that may cut teachers, enlarge class sizes, and impact the learning experiences for all of our children across the county. There's another vulnerable entity I'm hoping that you're planning to protect, which is our forests. I read an executive order that was already signed by Donald Trump on March 1st, 2025, to increase domestic timber production and bypass environmental laws and regulations meant to ensure this process is done sustainably. According to data I found on the county website, we have almost 74,000 acres of state land and over 26,000 acres of federal land. Our landscape in Sussex County is something that many, including myself, value not only for its beauty, but because we understand the broader implications of a functioning and healthy ecosystem. I would like to know the plan for how our county plans to address the demands that may be put on our land. I want to know the plan for ensuring sustainable forest management. I want to know the plan for our continued assessment that any timber production would have on air quality, water quality, and wildfire risk. On your website, I found a resource called the Open Space Inventory, which states that, quote, "Preserved open space consists of those lands that will be part of Sussex County's landscape forever." If the Trump administration disagrees that Sussex County should be able to maintain its forest, what is your plan to challenge that? Thank you.
Good evening, Doreen Edwards Vernon. My head is ready to explode. First of all, I just want to mention one thing. I did leave the premise to go get something to eat while you were in executive session, and I noticed that the area out front of the building is in bad disarray. And that's a hazard. Somebody could fall, trip, and wind up suing the county. So I hope you could look at that and take care of that promptly, because that's, that's an issue. I don't know how many people have a phone to the President directly to know exactly what's going on in the administration right now. I have not heard anything about cutting Medicaid, Medicare, Social Security. As a matter of fact, I've heard several times that that is not the case. They will be cutting fraud, waste, and abuse. And if anybody wants to say something, they can come up, if they're so allotted, but don't interrupt me. Thank you. So that's quite disconcerting to me. I'm a proud daughter of a veteran in World War II. He served in his young years, worked very hard for his family. I didn't get to see him as often as I'd like. I am a conservative. I am a proud Republican. I don't overspend. I pay my taxes, and I've worked all my life. Now I'm retired, and I'm trying to enjoy my retirement. And yes, there's going to be some rocky roads, but in anything good, there is some rocky road. So I'd ask these people to have some patience, see what's going to happen. We've had some terrible lawfare in previous administrations, and I don't think it's fair, or right, or respectful to talk about orange man or this or that. He got a good vote from the general public, so I just want to say that. Also, there is something else I want to pass out-
One minute.
To the board, if I may, in regards to a county in, in ar- in Orange County, no, in New York State that has done something that I think is really good in regards to the Constitution. We talk about veterans and how much work they put and how many veterans died to keep our rights in this country. So I'd like you to take a look at it. It's a legislation that was passed by this county. It's a county that has, I think, over 7,000 residents, 15, I think, 15 districts. Let's see, just give me a minute, please. Anyway, a lot of people, okay? So I'm going to pass this, may I? Okay, thank you.
I'll, I'll just take them, ma'am.
All right, so how many do we need? Eight, one, eight. Population 77,042, 15 legislators
Time.
Total district with five districts. So just as a reference. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Have a great evening.
John Snyder, Sandyston. I also am a retired teacher. I taught 27 years in the Essex County Vocational School System, Bloomfield Tech, and Newark Tech. I am in complete favor of closing the Federal Department of Education. The federal government should have nothing to do with education. The state has a Department of Education. Someone mentioned here about
Nobody interrupted when other people were talking. Don't you do it yourself. I can sit here, listen to you mutter it under your breath, sit and be quiet, be respectful of everybody else.
Thank you. Someone recently spoke about forest management, and we only need to look to California to see what Democrats do with forest management. In the 80s, Ronald Reagan addressed the dangers of the national debt. That time, it was approaching $2 trillion. I haven't kept up with it, but I think it's above $35 trillion now. We are in danger of a complete 100% collapse of everything that runs in this country. The only other thing I want to say is thank you, Donald Trump. Thank you, Elon Musk. And make America great again. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Zoe Heath. I live in Lafayette. I've been coming to county chemistry meetings since I was 18, and it has changed a lot, which is a good thing. There are some members of this board who I think we would all love to see removed, but the change is a good thing. I've been coming to these meetings a long time, and I've heard dozens of members of the public come to this board asking for something and for it to fall on deaf ears. And so many people have spoken tonight, many of whom this was more than likely their first meeting. And I would just implore this board to sincerely listen to people. People are afraid of what they're hearing in the news about the current administration. And I don't say this in my capacity as the Democratic Chair of Sussex County. I say this as a resident of this county, somebody who's been coming to these meetings for years, somebody who pays taxes, who knows you, who knows your families. People are freaked out. People are scared. They're looking for leadership. I know this county doesn't have as many resources as the federal government or the state government, and know the county has a lot of problems that they have to overcome. The infrastructure issues in this county, the rising homelessness in the county. But folks are looking to you for a plan regardless of party affiliation, and they really need to see leadership and hear that from you. Thank you.
So moved. Mr. Hayden, we have four seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Twenty-three reminders, just in case you guys forgot. I'm sorry. That's all I got for you. Can you hear? A little bit better? No? I'll say, I'll talk real loud. Monday is St. Patrick's Day.
Yay!
Don't forget it, okay? Anyway, please check the county's website at www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules. And just before I close for a German, you know, this is a public comment. This is not for Q and A. We'd be here for days if we answered all your questions. We don't sit on our hands here. I do appreciate your comment. Yes, we do get paid here. And, and if you think that's enough, it is not. I can assure you that. All right, so at $30,000, if we got that, which we don't, would be about $14.24 an hour, which is not a minimum wage. And we don't get that. Just saying. So that's a little insulting to us, but we do it. We don't do it for the money. It's not about the money. But if there's any time, any time that you guys have a question, you could email us. You'll get an answer. One way or another, you'll get an answer. If not, you can give us a call. We can answer those emails, those phone calls, but we're not going to do it here. We'll be here all night. So just keep that in mind next time you come and you have a question. I know there's a lot of people here. I know John's asked questions before. I think Ken Collins probably has himself. We can answer your questions via email. Thank you again for coming. I appreciate it. All right, and finally, number 25 is a German. Motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Hayden, Deputy Director Space, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries. This meeting is adjourned.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:03.